A hard out, and I know that at least one of us wants to have a hard out. Maggie, I have no idea what your schedule is, so I might be outing the rest of us. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have on our agenda two different public comments, plus a discussion in the middle. I'm going to suggest let's get started with public comment if anyone has any sort of opening remarks that they'd like to make, and then I'd like to hear from Ms. Holt, who has put together some research for us. The goal of today's meeting is essentially to send her home with a brief on what changes we would like. She has analyzed the existing map and the changes in the population. I'm sure that each one of the three commissioners probably has some ideas of what they'd like to see changed, if anything. I'm sure the members of the public have some ideas about what they would like to see changed, if anything, or kept the same. We can let her know, and then she can come back, trying to bear in mind all the suggestions that she's gotten, sometimes conflicting probably, and do her best to create a new map for us, which we will at a subsequent meeting then give her feedback on. So that sounds like it'll be an easy job for you. So with that in mind, public comment.
Good evening. Roberta Winters, past president of Legal Women Voters of Radnor Township. I would like to commend the Board of Commissioners and the three of you sitting here today for having this meeting in public, and also for having Amanda Holt, who we consider to be superb in this field, back in Radnor to help us do the right thing. Thank you.
You gotta talk for longer to give me a chance to set my stopwatch up. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, you are up.
So I had sent you all the assessment that I had prepared of the wards in Radnor Township showing that the new population mean is around 4,748 persons, and you want to come within somewhat of that range, and that when looking at the current ward boundaries, there are several that are within the acceptable population range, so would not have to be adjusted, and then there are others that clearly fall outside and would need to have adjustments made to them, depending on how the board would want to move forward. And then showed some illustrations demonstrating how the different population shifts had occurred in the township, both at a ward level and then at what the smallest geographic area is in a township, which is a census block. And then noted some observations that the board may want to take into consideration based on what I had seen as they looked to move forward, noting that it is possible to make no changes to the boundaries of wards five, six, and seven, that Ward Three, over half of the population, is heavily concentrated in one small area, in that Villanova University area, and taking a least change approach would require moving about 500 persons from Ward Three to Ward Four, and then the remainder of Ward Three, as well as Ward One and Two, would need to be reconfigured based on population requirements.
Are we able to get the overhead projector up and working so that you could maybe show off some of those exhibits?
I mean, do they have it on the laptop?
Yeah.
Or...
Awesome. Thank you very much. Do you have something that you can put on the table? It'll project. If not, you are free to use my tablet. I'm happy to give that to you.
I don't... Well, I could, I mean, I have a printout.
That's ideal. If you could just put it right on the table.
Right on the table? Wow. So high-tech here. Like that? There we go.
Yes.
Look at that.
And then I think that somewhere in the neighborhood of the podium, there's probably a large orange pointer, which you can use to point to specific pieces of that.
Whoa.
There you go.
Wow.
That's less high-tech, but it's useful for the folks on TV.
Okay, sure. Um, there you go.
Thank you, Ian.
Yes. Um, sure. So let me... Okay, so let me go back here. So this is showing the population changes by ward, and the ones that are within the acceptable range are the white ones here. So that was Ward Five, Six, and Seven. And then Ward Four was outside of the acceptable populations. It's underpopulated by quite a bit. And then Ward Three is the one that is overpopulated currently, with most of the population concentrated right over here, in the Villanova University area. And then these are also underpopulated, but to a lesser extent. And, let me... And I'd also shown... And then this shows by census block, which may not translate quite as well on TV because it is much smaller, with the darkest purple being the least populated, moving up to the dark green, which is the most populated area. So you can see over here where there's some densely populated areas, more so than the rest of the township. And the census blocks cannot be divided, so any reconfiguration has to work within those census block boundaries. Is there more you want me to recap now that we have an illustration, or...
No, that's perfect. Thank you. So I kind of gave an outline at the beginning of the meeting of what I was looking to do. And to be fair, this is a conversation that you and I had a while back, but is there something that you need from us now, other than just kind of have a conversation about where we're looking to go? What input would you like from us in order to create a new map?
It's helpful to know what your priorities are, because you can wipe the slate clean and just start all over. You can start there. To the other extreme, where you can try to make as few changes as possible to what already exists on paper, and then, of course, anything in between that. So knowing which kind of approach you all would like to take is helpful. I mean, do you want to wipe the slate clean and just start over? Do you want to make modifications, just the fewest modification possible to existing boundaries, or something in the middle? And then also, it's helpful to know what your priorities are within that. Do you want... Is it a problem if, like, a polling place is moved outside of its current district, for instance? Do you want the residents of incumbents to be considered? Is there other information that you want to have considered? Are there particular communities that you find meaningful, that you don't want to see divided? Like, you have a lot of colleges and universities in your township. Is that something that should be factored in at all? Those sorts of things are helpful to know.
Okay. In that case, I'm going to say, why don't we open up the floor to the three commissioners first, then we'll take public comment. If you have any questions, this is a lot more informal than a regular township meeting, so if you have questions as you're hearing things, please feel free to chime in. I'm going to give you actually this microphone. You are the most important person here. It's got an on and an off switch, which sometimes even work. Instead of having you run up to the microphone when you have a question and batting someone out of the way, maybe you could just use that portable microphone and ask the question so that people in TV land can hear you.
Sure.
This is relatively informal. I am, however, going to remind the members of the public that while we might answer questions for you here the way we would not in a township meeting, we don't have all of the answers, and frankly, they're probably better posed as requests to Ms. Holt than they are as affirmative questions to us, unless you have a question about stormwater management, in which case I'm happy to talk to you all day long. Somebody else. I've been talking for a while.
So my opinion about the wiping the slate clean is that people get really cranky when they have to change where they vote. People are bonded to where they vote. And of course, when you're changing some populations and shifting them around, there's going to be some of that. But I would try, as a whole, to modify as little as possible. The other thing that has... I've been thinking about and has concerned me is the representation of Villanova University by four different commissioners, that I think that that's difficult for communication, more on Villanova's half than on ours, but... And I wonder if it might be fewer. And then I'm still thinking.
Yep, thanks. And just to respond to the comment about priorities, I just wrote a few down here. I agree with Commissioner Myers, the fewer changes, the better. I think neighbors, at least the ones who I've talked to, you know, Election Day is a community event. It's a neighborhood event, and, you know, a lot of neighbors go to the polls together. I think we've built those traditions, and I'd like to see those remain for as many as possible. I understand that some changes will have to be made, but, you know, I think the last census, I think the borders are... They've always felt right to me, so, you know, if we can try to stay as close to those as possible, I think that would... I'd prefer that. Are we responsible for polling sites in this endeavor as well? I heard you mention polling sites, and I just... I'll just say, right now, we have a precinct in the sixth ward. And I don't know the reason for it, but they don't vote in the ward, and it causes a lot of problems. I think a lot of... I think some people don't turn out because they don't have either the transportation, the time, or, you know, they just don't want to go outside of their neighborhood to vote. So if there's a way that... If that is something that we're charged with, I would like to see polling sites... That should be a requirement. Polling sites have to be within that precinct. One thing I don't think is important is protecting an elected official. I think the data should be what the data is, and if an official is redistricted out, I think that's just how it plays out. I don't think this process should be protecting anybody. And then the only... I do have a... I have questions and concerns about Villanova, how they're represented, how they're counted, how they're represented. The numbers seem skewed, you know, the numbers in the census compared to how many students actually vote. So we're going to spend a lot of time, I think, figuring out where to put these students when, on Election Day, like, are they even an important data point? And I'd like to hear more about how they're counted in the census. 2020, you know, some of those students don't even live on campus anymore. They're not part of Radnor community. So like, do we have options with Villanova, is I guess what I'm getting at? And then my last point, we're here talking about wards. Will we get... Will we go a little bit deeper and talk about precincts? I mentioned earlier that I'd prefer to see streets like West Wayne Avenue, not split, so one side's voting at Precinct One and the other side's voting at Precinct Two. They're neighbors. I'd like to see them in the same places, if possible. So if we're able to go a little bit more granular in the weeds and define precincts, I think that'd be a helpful exercise.
I can just comment. The precinct, you would have, well...
I'm not sure your microphone is on.
Is it not on? You have the on switch on. Or is it something else?
It just not be working well. You might have to jump up and knock people out of the way.
Knock people out of the way?
He comes to the end to the restroom.
Oh, there you go. I turned it off again, so now it's definitely not on, but, I mean, I just flipped it on. Is that... Oh, the battery may be going. Okay, well, that's okay. We'll knock everyone out of the way here. So precincts are generally, like, worked on by the, like, election office, and they're a subset of a ward. So like, once you've established your ward boundaries, then you determine whether or not is the population too big to be all in one voting precinct? Does it need to be in two voting precincts? And those sorts of things. And then you can adapt the boundary within that. So that is something that could be worked out, but I'd say that may be more of a part two, because the bigger question is, you know, what the ward boundary should be, and if you can't agree on those, then the precinct boundaries don't... Won't come to the forefront yet. So, yes. And you asked about how college students are counted, or university students. They're considered quartered populations in the census, like you would find for, you know, like, a care community, for instance, like nursing homes and things like that are considered quartered populations, or correctional facilities, or jails. Those are all considered quartered populations, and there are specific rules on how they get counted in the census. And it was a little challenging, I believe, during this last census, because... And it became more of a question because of, with COVID going on and people not necessarily being where they normally were right at the time when the census was occurring, there were some questions raised about how that all worked. But that, I would have to get back to you more on how the technical details all worked out, because there was a lot of back and forth about that, and to get you a firm answer on what the US Census ultimately ended up doing in that circumstance. But we, at this point, can't go back and adjust the census number, so however they counted them, that is what it is and what we have to work with.
So for a college student, are they... Do they list Villanova as their home address? Or do they list New York, Connecticut, you know, wherever they're from, as their home address?
It's based on, not necessarily where it's... So quartered population has to do with... You have to understand, when the census is being counted, right? It's not necessarily where you live, but it can also be sometimes for transient population, like, how do you count homeless people and things like that? And so they have rules, which, like I said, I have to go back, and I can send you the document, too, if you're interested in reading more details on that. But how all these people get counted, because it's not all about necessarily where they live, but where they're at at the time that the census is being counted, and what qualifies as where they generally reside.
Is the location where someone is identified on this map in particular and on the census generally identical to where a person is registered to vote?
Not necessarily, because the census is not based on voter registration.
So we might see a large fraction of people living on Villanova's campus, but in reality, many of them are unregistered. Many of them are registered to vote in a foreign state, or registered to vote in just a different county in Pennsylvania altogether.
Sure.
Which is, I mean, that's what you said before. We're going to spend a lot of time talking about this, but in reality, I doubt that they really... I hope that they all show up, but we're on television. Students, please show up and vote, but... And, you know, vote Democrat. But I suspect that that's... I don't think they're watching. I guess I'll say that, in response to some of the specific questions you asked, I agree with my two colleagues. I think that we should start with the map that we already have. I think that it's going to be deeply confusing to people to say the entirety of the fifth ward is now the, you know, third ward or something. If we move a couple of lines here and there, it's going to be easier for people to understand. I was on the boundary of one, now I'm on the boundary of the other. Making a wholesale revision is going to be tough. I'm going to say that I mostly agree with Commissioner Abel with respect to, I would not prioritize the locations of commissioners. However, I would say that I would look at a map as a little bit suspect if the commissioners were being districted out of their homes, and I'd want to know why, and whether there was not another way to do the same thing. Put another way, we have a map right now that has seven commissioners, one of which is a minority party member. If we redraw the map, and Jake, you're the only person who gets redistricted out of your ward, and suddenly your ward is majority Democrat, and it looks like it's now going to be a 7-0 board, that would raise some flags for me. And for the same reasons, for parity, I would be interested in anybody else. It feels like, for the most part, there's got to be a way. If there's going to be a bulge in one place, you could probably move it to another place. So not a deal breaker for me, but I would find it a little suspect. And then I also share the concerns about Villanova that both my colleagues have expressed. I have been told, albeit by people who I don't think would have reason to know, but I have been told that Villanova was broken up in the first instance, specifically in order to dilute their vote. There are many sort of plausible reasons that are advanced for this, because Villanova students are transient or anything else. I was a Villanova student, and then, you know, 15 years later, I'm on the Board of Commissioners. So transancy is as transancy does, I guess. They are a member of our community. They have their own set of unique interests, probably more so than most other areas in the township. Being a student on a campus gives you a very unique set of interests that are not going to be shared with a whole bunch of other people in the township. So their vote should not, in my opinion, be diluted, although, looking at this map and seeing that there is such a large population, I worry that there's going to be tension between the goals of not changing the map wholesale and also getting them all into one ward. So my priority would be, as much as possible, getting Villanova students into a ward where they can vote. If it's two wards instead of four, three is better than four, two is better than four, one would be best. With that, I'm going to say I'm going to turn it over to the group. We're interested in hearing from you guys. Like I said before, this is a little more informal, so ask questions, interact, and we'll go from there.
And can we put the... Can we put the ward view up?
No, no, we can go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hallie Ammons. I'm the Assistant Director for Government and Community Relations at Villanova University, and appreciate everyone having this meeting tonight. This is such an important discussion, and I won't take too much of your time. I would echo what the commissioners have already stated regarding Villanova's position and our situation within the township. The campus divided within... Or between four wards does represent a... An obstacle to voting for our students. It is an obstacle to access. Students could potentially have to register or re-register every year, every time they move. Students move... Just students who are living on campus. There, you move from South Campus to the Commons or to West Campus, and you're having to change your address every time. I spent the afternoon today actually registering students to vote, and that came up several times. And luckily, our students, to their credit, developed a civic engagement initiative to impart, educate the population on this. So students are more empowered than they used to be. They have a better understanding. But it's still, it's quite a lot of education, and it really is a question of access here. It is a little tougher for this population to register to vote. So I would, you know, we would certainly advocate for some sort of consolidation there to make that access more equal, more consistent with the rest of the township. And I would note that Villanova is also prepared to, should there be a change in the boundaries, Villanova is prepared to provide a polling place that would serve not only our students, of course, but would be a resource for the rest of the community. Happy to take any questions, but I'll have a seat.
So if the map was to consolidate from four to, as Commissioner Larkin suggested, you know, three, two, or one, so if, say, you have two locations, would you be able to provide...
I speak loud and clear.
Would you be able to provide two polling sites on campus?
I know that, I believe that there would be a desire to, should that be the way that the map ends up.
Okay.
You know, so...
And any... I mean, do you have any data? Like, how many students are on campus? How many students are registered to vote in Radnor Township?
I think that's really... We don't. I mean, the short answer is no. And I think that the obstacles around voting may have something to do with that. There is certainly a lot of interest in voting. Students do register. They do like to... They do want to register where they are living. Not everybody, but a good number do want to register here. So there is that interest, but, as I said, you register one year, you vote your... Let's say it's a presidential election. It's a big election. Everyone wants to vote. Lot of energy around that. You come back the next year, there's less energy, and, oh, I've got to re-register. I have to go through the whole process again. So it's a hurdle that folks may not want to jump over, so they opt out. They stop participating. And maybe by the time the next big election comes around, they've moved on from the enterprise. So by consolidating, you're in one, you know, you're on one side of campus, you know where you vote, you have a polling... The same polling place you're going to go to for more than one year. It's a less of a mental hurdle, I think, for folks to get over.
Where are the majority of Villanova students now? So Third Ward, and what's the other highly concentrated ward?
So there's... There's West Campus, which is residence halls, and I don't know off the top of my head which wards they are. That would be the Seventh, I believe, the Third and the Seventh. Is that correct? And then, on the other side of Lancaster, you have the Commons, and that's, I think it's in one ward on its own, and then you have South Campus, which is in a separate ward. So there are four separate polling places, dependent on your residence hall. With the Commons, that houses approximately 1,200 students, so that's a big population of students right there. South Campus, off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly how many students are there, but that's a lot of our first-year students are there. Most of our first-year students are there, so that's another pretty significant portion of the population. And then there are residence halls located on Main Campus, but it's just two. So that's not quite as much. That's not quite as big of a concentration of students on Main Campus there. West Campus is another larger population center, with mostly second-year students on that side.
So remember, we're going to have to stick to the census blocks, so I'm not sure...
Right.
That's really what matters as far as moving...
Right.
One to another. It would be really helpful, and I imagine it would be very helpful for Amanda to have the information that you just outlined.
Sure, sure. And that's something...
As far as, you know, how many you think are in which census block.
Oh, sure, sure. That's something I can look into. Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Amanda, can students register to vote using their mailroom address instead of their residence hall address?
Their mailroom address instead of...
Roberta, seems like she knows the answer, and she wants to tell us.
Villanova is unique because they have students registered at their dormitory facilities. If you go to Cabrini and Eastern, they have a mailroom, and all students have that same address.
So Villanova could do that?
I'm not sure what Villanova would choose to do. I'm just mentioning how Cabrini and Eastern, and I believe also Valley Forge Military Academy, because Villanova is not the only institution of higher learning in our township.
I think Oberlin did that, too. That would be an easy way to get every student into a single ward without us doing the brain damage on figuring out how to change the ward maps. If you had a solicitor who wanted to look into the feasibility of doing that for Villanova, and you can either educate the other institutions, or you can educate us, that would be really helpful for the next time. And if you'd be willing to bring that back, I'd be very interested in seeing that in advance, and maybe you could share it with Ms. Holt as well? Thank you.
Do you have a single mailroom?
Well...
Or do people actually... Because some places have mailrooms within the dorms, so...
Well, I'll tell you this. I'll tell you how the students register, how they put their addresses on the registration form. That might illustrate the point. So in the first address block, every student puts 800 East Lancaster Avenue. And then in the apartment section, they list their residence hall, Stanford, Commons, St. Catherine, what have you. And then there's a second line where they list their VU Box number, in addition to Villanova, you know, Pennsylvania, 19085. So I believe it's the residence hall that is determining where they are going. That's how they're figuring it out. But they... There is a mailroom. I don't know if there is one central, or if there are maybe more than one, to handle, to address different sides of campus. So that might be something that, you know, if there's more than one, I don't know what that would do to this process.
But they all have a Villanova University Box 306.
They do. Everyone has a box number.
And it may be in a different location, but it's still Villanova University Box Something.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
The more we can within the bounds of the rules, and I just don't know what they are, so I'm going to ask if you have a solicitor, if he could help us.
Sure.
I'm assuming it's Nick, but if there's somebody else, I'd be interested in knowing it. That just makes our job so much easier.
Sure, yeah, yeah. And I mean, I think that the, you know, making the access easy for the students is the end goal, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, happy to look into that.
Thank you. And thank you, Roberta.
I just want to commend you also for looking at Villanova. That's been a concern of ours for many years. And I think one of the things as we look, as Jake also mentioned, where our polling places are located, it's really important that we try to engage young voters. The research shows that voting becomes a habit. And once you have students at age 18 registering to vote and they vote the first time, they're more likely to vote the second, third, fourth, and fifth time. And I think it's very regrettable that in Radnor, we've made it very difficult for our young voters to register to vote, first of all, particularly Villanova, and secondly of all, to get to a polling place that's accessible to them without having vans, public transportation, however it's done. Because Cabrini, Eastern, Valley Forge Military Academy, vote at the Wayne Senior Center, which is not an easy drop for them. And Villanova is going to the high school, to Radnor Elementary School, to the Rosemont Plaza and one other place, and it's, it's a challenge. And what's happened in many cases, I know, particularly with Villanova students, they'll go back to where they were voting the previous time, get to the polling place and be informed they're at the wrong polling place and are sent away. And because they don't understand the rules about provisional ballots, don't cast a vote. So I think it's really important that we engage our young people. They're our future. Thank you.
Bering Gammers, South Wayne Avenue. I'd like to comment on some of the comments that Commissioner Abel and Commissioner Larkin have already made. First off, with the non-major arterials, like excluding Lancaster and Conestoga, to the extent that the census blocks allow it, the census blocks allow it. Both sides of the street would be nice. I know that's not always going to be the case, but that's, you know, the last detail when you get to the edges. The other thing related to protecting incumbents, and I agree with Commissioner Abel as well as your cautions on, on that, which are, which are fine. Actually, I think if you look at what happened last time, some based upon population, but there were more wholesale changes based upon population and protecting the commissioners. So it wasn't, you know, was, were they on the edge and can we do a bubble? The, the major changes were made to accommodate that. So that's something that sounds like you're, you're not in favor of. It would be, let's, let's tweak the changes as we can. And obviously, to the extent that we can, that we can try and, you know, get some of the, oops. You know, some of the, you know, little extremities here out. And that might even be Villanova, depending upon how like the third ward being overpopulated is. But the more, I guess I'll say, blockish they can be, so that it looks like it was done in a reasonable manner. So even the appearance of, of being done correctly would, would be nice. I don't have comments on the Villanova situation, but I appreciate the commentary that's been done. I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and obviously, getting the younger folks to vote earlier is, is a good idea and making it less difficult and more consistent would be great.
Don't go anywhere, because I had a comment bouncing off of what you said and you might have a response. Right now, we have three wards that share downtown Wayne. We have the third ward on the south side of Lancaster. We have the first ward on the northwest side of Lancaster. And we have the second ward on the northeast side of Lancaster. And you had mentioned not breaking up arterials. While I generally agree, I do think that there's a lot of value to having multiple stakeholders on the board in downtown Wayne, which is a vital part of the township. So while I would agree with what you said, for the most part, that would be one exception.
Actually, I was, I believe I was saying the opposite. For major arterials, I'm fine with ward, with commissioners being on opposite sides. I was referring more to the residential streets where neighbors across the street from each other, to the extent the census blocks allow, stay in the same ward. But on Lancaster, perfectly fine with being across, Conestoga being across. I mean, you've got to cut it somewhere, obviously, with the census blocks. And, and I agree with that premise too. You know, Villanova may be the exception to what you're saying there because of what the students do. But for the W B O D, having multiple folks for the businesses to go to, that's perfectly fine, yes.
Makes sense, yeah. And in the W B O D, those people aren't voting. They don't live there. That's where the business is.
Yeah, but they still have, have multiple commissioners to speak to.
Right. They get all the benefits with all the detriments. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for committing to a bipartisan process and bringing in expertise from Amanda. And the, you know, I have a lot of confidence that this will be a data-based thoughtful decision. I know that Jack Larkin, Jake Abel, I know both of you didn't necessarily grow up in Radnor. You don't necessarily have personal experience of the history, at least in my lifetime. I don't know about, okay, so as someone who was raised in Rosemont, which is no longer a community that a lot of people realize exists because of changes with the post office. And I'm aware of several other communities within Radnor like that, like St. David's and Ethan. I encourage all of you to visit the Historical Society, learn what, what the boundaries. I'm also a geography nerd, you know, so I really love maps and all the low. We have right now communities that are no longer defined by anything, but they're real communities within Radnor that had a meaning of some sort. And businesses and homes were built up around and inside of them. And I would love if that's kind of a overlay you're looking at in the process. Rosemont, for example, used to contain Boe Prey as well as my neighborhood, Old Oaks. And Boe Prey is now in Ward Four and Old Oaks is in Ward Seven with a lot of the other, you know, formerly Rosemont communities. And Garrett Hill, I didn't realize it had its own post office because that predates me. But it's one of the older communities in Ward Four and not Ward Four, Ward Seven. And then you look over at, I mean, Ethan's kind of all over the place. And this may help you with the issue of Ward Three being overpopulated. And I think Inverary and some of those places down near the Willows were actually maybe Ethan. I, I don't know where the south boundary of it was, but like Ethan Village, where Radnor, where the Quaker meeting is, was Ethan. And there's a lot of, like if you look at some of that, and of course, what I'm suggesting also kind of like could trigger polling place changes. And as a former judge of elections, I had to face, you know, I've had, even when they just moved one block into the other precinct of Ward Seven, it was like so sad to be dealing with people all day who are coming to the wrong precinct because they still didn't know. It took more than one election for people to figure it out. But, but I really think that a sense of the history of Radnor is getting lost by decision-making that where people aren't looking at the history. So I would recommend all of you familiarize yourself where these communities that no longer have their own post office, but were a viable community within our township, where exactly they were, like on the, where are they on the map? Know their boundaries before you make final decisions. And I guess the other thing, you know, my understanding is, and I, I'm not sure if someone else said this because I didn't hear every single word everybody was saying, but I believe there, you know, there's a gentleman at the county who makes all the decisions on the polling places and, or in conjunction with, he's the guy who, who advocates them and coordinates all the stuff. And he like coordinates the machines to the Board of Elections at the county. And we, we have a lot of polling place issues. And I think there's both the communication process of accessibility, transportation, people having to come from, I'm not sure if it's one, two, or six, but to the township building to vote where the township building, our township building doesn't even have public transport that brings you right here. How crazy is that? I mean, I just, you know, I didn't mean to bring that up at a meeting, but it's directly relevant, like all of the polling places should be fully accessible and you should be able to get there by public transit. Now, you might say you could take, take the bus to Lancaster and Radnor Chester Road. You might say you're going to take the bus to Radnor Chester Road and then walk here, but there's not a lit, good pavement, good, there's not a great pathway here. And I think there's some things to be addressed there. We have very limited options where you can put a good polling place in addition to just there not being one in some of these wards in any natural way. So thank you and good luck. You have a lot of work.
We do actually have public transportation to this building. You just have to commit a crime in order to get it.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Larkin, because having a polling place at the same site as the police station is not a recommended asset for the community. The other thing I would like to mention is I have worked with some of the party chairs and with our police offices and with some of our university folks and also our school districts folks in looking at polling places in the last few years. And the sense was they did not want to change any polling places until we redistricted. And then came COVID and then everything was changed. And believe it or not, when things were communicated well, and I think it took a lot of effort on everyone's part, that communication made it possible for people actually to get out to vote. And with mail-in voting, some of that also alleviated some of the challenges that we've had. So I don't know what the future's going to bring, but we as a township need to, and however it's done, and I believe it's the commissioner's role, once we're willing to meet, and I'd be happy to facilitate that again. We need to go to the Delaware County and have it approved. And I know Havreford, for example, worked long and hard to get the polling place moved to their institution. So Havreford College now has a polling place. But that took effort to get done and has to be approved by Delaware County. And sometimes, depending upon the makeup of Delaware County's Board of Elections, that can be easier or harder.
Not seeing anyone else leaping up. Do we want to have maybe some final thoughts from the commissioners, if we have any? I do not. And then maybe some final thoughts from Ms. Halt and we can all come back at the next date?
I, I don't have any final thoughts. I just want to thank, you know, thank you for the presentation and thank, thank you to all the neighbors who showed up and participated tonight. You know, I'm, I'm encouraged and positive that I don't think this is going to be a, you know, a contentious issue. I think the data is laid out really well. The visuals speak for itself and I, you know, I think, you know, I have confidence that, you know, the three of us are going to be able to work together and, and, you know, come to some solutions that we can present to the community that I think everybody will be satisfied with.
I just have one, one thing to say to all of you out there in TV land. If you have something that, you know, you weren't able to get here, you know, our email addresses are on the township website. Feel free to send us specific ideas, questions, so, and we can sort of be the relay station for everybody.
I echo both of your sentiments. Thank you all. Ms. Halt, do you have any thoughts for us?
I'll just first say thank you for having similar priorities. That makes it easier when you don't have, you know, three different things you're hearing for different people. And just since there was some talk about incumbents, I just want to make it clear I do not know where anyone lives in the township. I mean, where the, any of the commissioners, I should say, live in the township. So I do not have that information. I'm not asking for that information, but I just realized that can be a sensitive point in the process. So I just wanted to be clear about that. But thank you so much.
Everyone, thanks much. I think we're done. I'll see you at the next meeting.